You've got an extra large umbrella.
You're not wet.
You're not wet.
I just saw a tiny one.
The Vine Intervention.
I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. Ed Beach will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to your equality for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
My Lord, tonight we send out a special prayer. I ask you to enfold all of the victims of the tornadoes, terrible weather that we've been experiencing, and hold them up, help them to get through the ordeal that they are facing, to help us tonight to do the right things for all of the citizens of Boonville. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mary, if you would please call, roll. Beach?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Ayler?
Here.
Heaton?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Hurt?
Here.
Thank you very much. Hearing of citizens' comments at this time, I would ask if you have any public comments you would like to make, if you would please go to the podium, state your name, and sign the roster with your name and the ward you live in. Now's the time to do that.
My name's Tom Bosley. I live in Ward 4. I'm here tonight because I've got wind of a, the city wants to contract out the water treatment plant, and first of all, I don't thi- I think they're too secretive about it, because everybody I've asked about it, nobody knew anything about it. The only person that knew anything about it was a publ- one of the guys on the Public Works, and I talked to him about it, and he said, "Well, we've already voted on that, and the people haven't even heard anything about it." I heard about it at a fish fry. I don't think that the city needs to be contracting out another part of the city. We contracted out trash, didn't help the people any. You know, the people have control over the water because it is their water. When you give it out on a contract, they lose all say-so about it. That's just another right that the people have that's being taken away by the government. We've already lost two businesses in two years, we're on the verge of losing the third, and yet you want to take this away. Now, I know it's not the same business, but it still is a business. And I know that these men that want this ju- that want this water plant aren't doing it because they like to run water plants, they're doing it for a profit. And the city is a break-even organization. Now, I know they have to have contingency money, but it's supposed to be run on a break-even organization. Not always happens, but we've been pretty lucky. I think you should have been more open with it, and I know that you spend both money at the water plant and at the wastewater treatment plant, and that doesn't bother me one bit. At least I know it's going to help keep the cost down. When these guys take over, they're going to pass that cost, well, if the government mandates something, they're going to pass that right on to us, the customer, and we're not going to have any say-so about it whatsoever. Now, I know tourism is a good deal for Boonville, but we can't rely all on tourism, we need real estate taxes. We're not getting any real estate taxes. We've lost Buquay, we've lost the bakery, maybe we'll get the bakery back, I don't know. We're losing Enertherm, or Nordine, whatever you want to call it. It's just, and I don't think they should be giving that up. We can run the water. I know they're going to say, "Well, we buy in big quantities, we can save you money." They're going to, they're going to put that money in their pocket. If you want to save money and buy in big quantities, get a co-op and buy for these other water plants around here. Jeff City's the only water plant in this area that I know is private. Every place else is a municipally-owned water plant that I know of. And I just hate to, hate for the people to give up another thing, you know. At least, we, if the people get down on the water plant, they've got a say in it. If they get down on the water plant when this company's running it, they don't have Diddley to say about it. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other public comments at this time? Hearing none, we will move to approval of the minutes of the May 6 council meeting. Those were in your packet, and you've had plenty of time to look those over, are there any additions or corrections? Saying none, they'll stand as presented. Consent items, we have none, presentation of accounts and claims. Mary, would you please read that?
Ordinance appropriating money. Be ordained by the council of the city of Boonville as follows. Section 1, for the purposes of paying salaries and various accounts against the city of Boonville which have been allowed by the council at the new break-in meeting thereof on May 20th, 2013, the sum of $299,599.14. General fund, $149,328.57. Sanitation, $17,961.87. CIT tax, $5,589.51. Waterworks, $51,613.34. Capital projects, zero. Wastewater, $57,804.99. Tourism, $4,148.24. Gaming, $13,152.62. Section 2, the bookkeeper is hereby authorized and instructed to draw checks on the respective city bank accounts in favor of the persons whose salaries and accounts have been allowed as above, amounting to $299,599.14, being the total amount of money above appropriated. Section 3, the sergeant shall take effect and be enforced from an act of passage, first reading on May 20th, 2013, but for the second time this 20th day of May, 2013, since a copy was made available prior to the meeting.
Second reading, title only.
Ordinance appropriating money.
Mark?
Mayor, I move we approve this ordinance.
Morris?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Beach?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Ayler?
Yes.
Heaton?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hurt?
Yes.
Unfinished business. Item A, second reading of bill number 2013-016, approving the final site plan of Unlimited Opportunities Incorporated.
An ordinance of the city of Boonville, Missouri, approving the final site plan of Unlimited Opportunities Incorporated at 1620 West Ashley Road, Boonville, Cooper County, Missouri, providing an effective date therefore in repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance.
I'd like to entertain a motion. Mark?
Mayor, I move we approve this ordinance.
Morris?
Second.
Okay. Does staff have any comments before we go into our comment section?
I do. There were six contingent items that the Planning and Zoning Commission had recommended, completed between their review and the city council approval, and we have moved a long way to getting there, we're not totally done, but we've got verification of the additional land purchase on the south side, on May 9th, they closed on the property. Also have an easement recorded for the joint driveway for CMP properties on the south side, so they have access to their property. Great Rivers has provided the city with the updated specifications on the lift station valve box, and that has been reviewed by Scott Bogler. They've also provided the lift station pump calculations, which have been reviewed and approved by Scott. We have the copy of the DNR list station sewer design permit that has been received. The city and UOI staff are still, we have verbal agreement on the lift station operations and, excuse me, on maintenance agreement with access to the lift station. We have not finalized that into a formal document, which I am drafting. We also need to finalize the city access to the city welcome sign, and frankly, I think that I'd like to see us get a little further along with the site plan and the grading before we define where that is, once the site is set, so we're able to really make sure that we want the sign to be where we think we want the sign. UOI has given us permission to move that welcome sign on their property, so we are in agreement on that, it's a matter of location, so I really don't want to finalize that until we get a little further along. And UOI staff has committed to maintenance of the stormwater facilities, and again, I think we need to get a little, little further along on that to make sure, once we see it, that Steve and their onsite, Steve Haig, our building inspector, and their onsite maintenance person can agree to a plan. They have committed to that, we have not written that up. So what I recommend, if the city council is so inclined to approve the final site plan, the plan meets all the requirements, and I would like to make it the occupancy permit contingent upon completion of the agreement, the two access easements, and the maintenance plan.
Okay. Did I do all right with that, Melon, Steve? Earl, did you have any comments? Questions from the council or comments? Noah?
What type of sewer system is this facility going to have, or the water? Is it the upgraded?
The stormwater?
Stormwater? Yes, yes. It is the upgraded, this is the first of its kind that we know of in Boonville, that have a concrete barrier wall with the slit in the middle and the downstream erosion control and so forth, and we all like the design. Scott opined that it thought it would be effective, and it looks like a good plan. We've just never seen it done, and we're not familiar with what the maintenance requirements are truly going to be, so we want to just kind of make sure that we understand, and what scheduling and what kind of maintenance to keep that, because as we know, the stormwater control basins and a few other opportunities we have in Boonville need some, need some maintenance.
Okay. Fast side of the system?
Yes.
Any other questions? Comments? Roll call.
We need to make a motion then?
To accept her recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Accept her recommendations, so it's like it is, but with Megas' recommendations, the staff approve. Is it just number 6? Is all of those intertwined in number 6?
There was a verbal agreement in 5.
Number 5 and number 6, except for the joint driveway, already have that access easement.
And those items are subject to occup- occupancy permit is subject to those items being approved by staff?
Completed prior to that.
So are you making that motion?
I am.
I'll second.
Okay. Comments or discussion on the second motion? Okay, we'll vote first on the amendment to make it contingent on the sixth contingent.
You got it, 5 and 6, huh?
Okay, roll call. Beach?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Ayler?
Yes.
Heaton?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hurt?
Yes.
Good. Now, this will be on the amended motion to accept the final site plan of unlimited opportunities, as amended. Didn't we just vote on the amendment? We voted on the amendment, this was to vote on the original. Yeah, okay. Beach?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Ayler?
Yes.
Heaton?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hurt?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You can throw a ceddie up now, Jennifer, if you want to. Okay. Congratulations and good luck, and I hope it stops raining immediately, so that you can afford.
Well, I'm glad we're here, because I needed some.
Okay. Item B, second reading of bill number 2013-017, authorizing conditions of settlement agreement of the Missouri State Operating Permit for the wastewater treatment plant with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources.
An ordinance for the city of Boonville, Missouri, authorizing a settlement agreement for resolution of the 2011 appeal of terms and conditions of the Missouri State Operating Permit for the Boonville Wastewater Treatment Plant by and between the Missouri Department of Natural Resources and the city of Boonville, Missouri, providing an effective date therefore and repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance.
Motion?
I make a motion that we approve bill number 2013-17.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Morris. Discussion, we had a workshop on this, of course, and David Shore came and spoke to us about it. Earl, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
No, I, nothing's changed since our discussions. I think we've been through it enough times, everybody has a pretty good grasp on it, and I think allows us to chart our course and arrange financing as we go, and I think it's a good settlement that allows us to function for a number of years without any real surprises.
Any questions or comments? Roll call. Beach?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Ayler?
Yes.
Heaton?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hurt?
Yes.
Item C, continued discussion on location of Central Missouri Cancer Memorial Park. Sure, in the right order. Earl?
I think I sent you all my memo some, couple, three meetings ago. This was the response that I think you requested from the board, from their board, sort of to express their preferences. It came in just after our last packet, so, so we didn't force it onto the agenda then, and, you know, the memo speaks for itself. I don't know if they have any representatives here this evening or not.
Anyone here speaking for Cancer Memorial Park? Don't think so. Okay. How does council wish to proceed? Morris?
If I could, Mayor, you know, the council has talked about hiring Marcia to kind of oversee Kemper, so until we make a final decision on that and figure out which direction we're going on Kemper, I'd like for this to be laid over until we can bring Marcia in and get some ideas and her viewpoints on it.
Okay. How does the rest of council feel?
So, I make a motion we table this until a later date.
Okay. There's a second?
Well, point of order.
I was going to say point of order, too. We need some discussion, an opportunity for us to discuss it before it's just laid over.
Okay. Do you want to withdraw your table for?
I didn't, I came here ways.
Okay. Would you speak up, please?
The council, I think, would like an opportunity to discuss this before it's laid over. I mean, there's eight of us here, I think, you know, everybody should have an opportunity to speak before we just decide to table it.
But the point of order for me was, there's no motion on the, on the table for you to table. So, so your suggestion to lay it over, we can simply lay it over without any kind of motion, because there's no motion on the table. But Noah makes a good point. We, you know, we, we received a communication from these folks, and we probably ought to at least discuss this, but I, my, my feeling is the same, or similar to what Morris has already spoken, Mayor. I, I think we, we need to give the, you know, Marcia and, and the folks that she's going to gather around her, an opportunity to look at this and the other things that we've been discussing on Kemper, so that we, so that we have an approach that fits with what we're committed to do.
Any other discussion?
I have a comment.
Yes.
As far as that recommendation on Marcia, I, I see her responsibility to us a little differently than you may, and that could be that I'm behind the curve on this. I believe Marcia's helping us with fundraising, with two particular and distinct recommendations on the board right now, with two buildings, maybe two buildings, at least one building in the near future, and there might be a longer-term vision that she might get involved with as well, but that may be so long that it doesn't really, all it does is put this in an indefinite loop. I think what we ought to do is give our best perspective of what we see the future of Kemper right now, and I know it could change, and whether that fits their recommendation or not, or whether they should look for an alternative site if we say no to Kemper. And that's where I think we ought to, I think we ought to give them an idea of whether this is a good idea or not a good idea right now. And I would like to say that I don't think that you can judge with Kemper's unknown future that that is necessarily going to be a serene and tranquil place. There might be some, some evolution that will make it not so serene and tranquil as they see it today, because it's very underused at this point. So, I, I am not a fan of these two locations. I'm not saying it couldn't work, I just, I just don't see it right now without, without having a long-term vision come, come forward. Now, Marcia might be the answer to that, and it may be something a little more outside of Marcia's view, that's all I'm saying. I, I wouldn't want to put it on her shoulders.
Morris?
The only thing, you know, we gave them, or the council itself rejected Kemper, and we come back with some suggested spots for them already.
Right. So what I'm saying is, we ought to just say no to these two sites, and let them decide if they want to go elsewhere, or they want to accept something else.
Becky?
You know, the council voted no to the one site that was recommended, which was right next to the YMCA. Then Earl came back with other sites that were recommended, which included another site at Kemper at that point in time. You know, I, I think that we need to give this group a direction on, on what we are going to do. But another question I have is, and I may have misunderstood a week ago, have we already engaged in the contract with Dr. Drennan, or is that still? Because my understanding is, there's, there's no contract at this point in time, we don't know if Dr. Drennan's going to be on board moving forward with fundraising on these projects or not, because we haven't acted on that at this point. So...
We have not formalized anything, we've had discussions, as you all know.
Right, there's been discussion, but...
But there's nothing in place yet, it would be forthcoming in the next 60 days, probably. She wouldn't be scheduled to start at the earliest until the 1st of August, and I suspect if we're looking at some sort of facility plan or whatever this would fit in, you didn't all come real quick after that either, so, you know, I...
And I don't know that I'm ready to say...
They'll have to come in for a while, I suppose.
And I don't know that I'm ready to say that Kemper is not a good location for this, at the original site that was recommended, right next to the YMCA. It's not a real big, large area, I, I don't see us going in and putting up a building there, or putting a parking lot or anything in there, I think it's going to be part of that roadway, just grassy area off the side of the roadway. But I think we do owe this group a, a decision, rather than keeping this drawn out further.
Noah?
I, she pretty much just said what I would have said. I echo Becky's feelings, that, you know, I, I think this has been going on even before February, this is the last of my rank in concept, that we had an actual meeting about it. And I know that there's been talks with staff prior to that, so I mean, my discussion with the group is, that yes, they just want direction. If they can't have Kemper, they're looking for us to tell them they can't have Kemper. And I know we've already voted on that once, and we said no to that first spot, I know that. But in Earl's recommendation memo, he did mention another spot on Kemper. We've batted this back and forth with them, I think they've done what we've asked them to, and that is to come back with another request, because frankly, I think some of the things we did was sort of backwards. This wasn't a city project, it was almost as if we were recommending to them places that we'd be willing to give them, when that's not really what they asked for. They didn't say, "I want a place out in Rolling Hills, I don't want a place out..." They didn't say none of that, and here we are trying to, "Well, we'll recommend this for you." Well, that's not what they asked for. They asked for something specific. We voted on it, we said no. There's been some more talks in the meantime, they've come back with another specific memo asking for something. I think we, we, they deserve a vote, they deserve, a vote is our ultimate direction. We can sit here and kick it to five different committees and have Marcia look at it, and obviously we do all of this. All we're doing is stringing them along. If you want to say no, vote, say no, and that gives them direction to move on. But I don't think we should just keep batting this down the road. I think ultimately, our recommendation lies in our vote.
Any other comments?
I guess we need to know what the big picture is for Kemper. I think Kemper, somewhere in Kemper would be just great for this, but if you don't know the big picture, how do you know the best spot? I, I, I think we just need more information.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess my response would be, I think that's, not, I think that's a good idea, but I think it may be unrealistic, because you're not going to put together a master plan about Kemper with any degree of certainty from where you stand today. You're just going to go piece by piece and hope you finally get something productive.
So the second spot, there's not going to be parking lots there, probably ever?
I wouldn't think so, that's what I wrote in that memo, it's kind of got a hole over there, there's a parking lot immediately behind it, we just built, and, you know, I can't see us doing much of anything out there in the front of it, and kind of leaving it open, but, you know.
I think that would be a beautiful spot.
Well, we need to clarify, too, because I think in Earl's memo, I believe he was thinking something farther down, closer to the President's House, in that corner, where this talks about it being in front of, it would be north of the administration building, in front of the library learning center and science hall, and south of the Hitch House. So I think we may be, I think we need to clarify with them if they understand exactly what Earl's memo was, because that's kind of two different places in my mind.
Right there. Yes, I was toward the north end, and we're not going to hug the property line, of course, or anything in there, we need a buffer there, but it's certainly not going to impact much into the front of the science hall. There's a gap there between the end of the property and science hall, it might, it might be a little bit, depending on what shape they end up with, but certainly not in front of the library learning center.
Right. Mark?
You know, in, in their request, they requested one we'd already denied, so I guess that's their answer, if it's already been denied once. Second of all, I'm not opposed to the other location, what I would like to see is maybe their space conceptual locations, so that we can look at that map and say, "Well, could you move it 10 feet there, or could you move..." I'm not opposed to it. The first one, we've already answered the question, so it's been answered. But the second site, you know, I'd be willing to look at some conceptual locations, and we could manipulate, you know, if, if we're inclined to that, or, you know, and, so I, I think that would be my comment, is that the first one, in my opinion, is already out, and was out when they got the, when they probably prepared this memo. But, second of all, if, if we could see other, and that would clarify, you know, in front of, north of, and south of, if we saw the size and dimension and where it would fit on the property, that might help everybody say, "Oh, that's a good location."
Noah?
Just to clarify something, some, some of you may not know, the mayor, Earl, myself, and Morris actually met with, was it Dane and, Dane Gregg and Charles? Were they both at that meeting? Both of them weren't at that meeting. So we, we had a pretty good discussion as far as what would happen if we approved any location that the city owned. And some of the discussion points we came to was, is just voting here tonight to approve a particular site isn't the end of it. I mean, obviously, our discussions went into, you know, there's going to be a contract on ma- who's going to maintain it, who's going to pay for it, who's going to cover for insurance, is the city going to be co- all those things, just like the bridge with Save the Katie Bridge Coalition, same thing, same kind of contract, Isle Capri, they rent that land from us, same thing. There's going to be extensive talks on agreements and contracts and site plans, have to be approved through planning and zoning, and I don't know who else, permits, we have, I mean, this vote on a location isn't the end of it, it's not the final say of this is where it's going to be at. I understand your point, Mark, and I can agree with that, it's easier to, to do a concept if you can actually see it on paper, I fully understand that. But I, I don't want everybody to think we're just voting, saying, "Yeah, go, go..." I understand your point, Mark, and I can agree with that. It's easier to, to do a concept if you can actually see it on paper. I fully understand that. But I, I don't want everybody to think we're just voting, saying, "Yeah, go, Coalition, go do your thing." We're not. We're trying to decide on a location that they can start fundraising on, they can start drawing up plans for, and of course, they have to take all the same steps anybody else is going to, through planning and zoning, through city staff. I don't know, it might even have to come back through us again to be approved, I don't know. We can always make a subject to that, too. But I don't want us to think that tonight's vote, if we do vote, is the final say. If not, it's just really more than anything, it's giving these people an answer, yes, we're okay with this location, go fundraise and get your stuff approved through the city and we'll move forward with it. Or no, everything you've said to this point, we're not okay with, either go somewhere else and look, or come back if a city owns another property you're interested in.
Mike?
I hear what you're saying, but I think that once you open the door, it's going to be hard to close it. And I'll just say this point blank, I'm not a fan of it being at Kemper at all. I see a future used to that that's different than a place that is potentially holy ground you'll never touch, and, and is not necessarily an integral, integral part of its planned future. So, I don't, I don't like the idea of going there. We have other parks and other locations. I don't, I don't think that that's where, we need to have a place where you don't touch the ground.
Okay. So, how do you want to proceed? Yeah?
I don't, I don't think we have anywhere near a consensus or, or an agreement. Just listen to the conversation. I, I think Earl's intuition probably was close with regard to that being maybe a decent location on Kemper, if he chooses to do Kemper. And Mike makes a good point. Kemper's got a huge tradition, and there's a lot about what is there that we want to, want to hold, and we think is sacred. Without a consensus, I don't think we, we'd go any further. So, what do we do? You know, do we hand it off? Do we think about it for two weeks and come back to it at the next meeting? I think that's probably up to you to, to lead us to that.
Okay. Well, why don't, any other comments?
I'd, I'd like to see a drawing of what it's going to look like and how big it's going to be, you know. I, my grandmother used to live across the street from the Kemper gym, over the Hopkins store, and I've really never seen anything in that area that we rejected, except tents when they had that bicycling group or whatever that came in. And, and, you know, even, I mean, I remember Kemper in the early 60s when they had, I don't know, several hundred young men that looked like they were never going to quit coming around the corner when they were marching, and, but I never saw that area used or anything, so...
Okay. Any other comments?
Why don't we delay this for another two weeks? Earl and I will get in contact with Charlie Melkersman and his group, and make sure that they are understanding exactly what his memo said. And we will continue discussions with them and take this up at the next meeting then. But you're right, we don't have a consensus, and I, I don't think that's good for them or for us. And I, I think, I think it's going to be, like Mike said, I think once we open the door, and that they're waiting to start their fundraising on where it's going to be, and when we say, "This is where it's going to be," how can we go back then and say, "Well, you know, the drawings didn't look like we thought they were going to," or "We've decided we need that for parking"? We're going to be the bad guys. So, we, we need to put a little more thought in this, I think. But I, there's been some good discussion. Noah?
I think too, if you would, and if you don't want to, I mean, I can certainly do this well, but if you're going to have a discussion with Charlie, I, I would suggest two things. One, this isn't a city project to push, for the lack of a better term.
Right.
So, if they want this, they should have somebody here tonight to sell it.
Yes.
Because it's not our job to sell it for them. So, one, if they want this, I'd suggest they have somebody here to answer questions and speak to these items. And two, I would stress the fact that if we do vote on it next time, and it's a no, and on both of them, then it's a no on both. So, I mean, I, I personally think it's either, we need to release them, we need to tell them no, if that's what it's going to be. But I think, two things, I think they need to understand that, that we, we may vote on it, and if we do, this could be the end of it. So, they should have somebody here to sell their project.
Okay. In Charlie Melkersman's defense, I believe there's a special school board meeting this evening.
There was.
So, I don't think he found a way to be in two places at once.
No, I understand.
So, I think he's still trying, but hasn't, hasn't mastered that one yet. So, we will visit with him about that. Okay. New business. Item A, consider building inspector's request set an evidentiary hearing date. There was a, well, was there a letter? I don't have my, mine coming to the top here.
Yeah, there's, there's a memo.
Steve Hague has sent a memo to Earl and myself requesting a dangerous building hearing, and being set for Monday, June the 17th, at 6:15. So, I would like to have a motion that that be set.
Salute.
Thank you, Mike. A second? I believe Noah has a second. Discussion? And this is for a property on rural street. I think Steve's been working pretty hard on this one.
Commercial.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call.
Beach?
Yes.
Boonville, Houston?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Ares?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hurts?
Yes.
Item B, first reading of bill number 2013-018, authorizing a professional service agreement between the City of Boonville and Alliance Water Resources Incorporated.
An ordinance of the City of Boonville, Missouri, authorizing a professional services agreement for the management, operations, and maintenance of the water treatment plant by and between the City of Boonville, Missouri, and Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, providing an effective date therefore, and repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance.
Okay. Do I hear a mo, or, excuse me, that's a first reading. We do have comments on there. Earl, do you want to make some comments?
Yes, I, I think I wrote you a memo on the topic, contrary to previous comments. I think we have been talking about this in one form or another for six months. The memo pretty much reflects that, and I'd also refer you to the whereas and the ordinance. As I said, I wrote those myself, and I think those capture what we're trying to accomplish here. So, for tonight, you know, we kind of went about it to start to see if the, the money worked, and then we looked into the terms of the contract, so we've, we've come to general agreements on those in what I consider a satisfactory state. So, I, I thought it would be useful at this point to, to let you learn a little bit more about the company and so forth, and then we'll follow that up with some comments that ML will provide on reference checks. So, I believe Sandy is here from Alliance, as well as she can introduce the rest of her, her group, and this will kind of give you an introduction to, to the company itself. I think you'll find that they're sort of the right size for us, and hopefully, Sandy.
Thank you. My name is Andy Neal. I am Vice President for Alliance Water Resources and the Director of Business Development and Water Resources. I have with me this evening Mr. Dale Wagner in the yellow shirt. Dale is the President of our company, and Mr. Gary Johnson in the gray shirt, sitting there next to Todd. Gary is the, what we call a Division Manager, is the, and is the manager who would be assigned to work with the City of Boonville if you should decide to proceed with hiring us. Just to give you a little background about our company, we're a privately held Missouri corporation. We were originally incorporated as Mid-Missouri Engineering in 1976. We changed our name in 1983, and, but we didn't have a change in ownership or services provided at that time. And the company's been continuously owned by company management, so everybody who's a manager is working for the company. We've been providing professional water and wastewater operations and management services continuously since 1978, so we're a well-established Columbia. Our headquarters are in Columbia, Missouri, just down the road. And we believe that if the city chooses, if you decided to go forward with hiring us, there are some, there are some little benefits to you and to the water treatment facilities. For one thing, I don't know how many of you know this, but the city has been in, had entered into an agreement in 2005 with Alliance Water Resources to help bring the city into compliance in providing a backup water treatment operator. So, since that time, we've had an operator who's been prepared to, he visits, or there's actually a couple of our operators who've visited your plant a couple of times a year, tours the facilities with Mr. Posley a couple of times a year to familiarize themselves. So, in the event that he's not available, or some emergency situation arises, you would have back, backup services available to you. If you were to hire us, we would immediately be able to make sure that you had three A licensed operators on site. A license is what your water plant requires. We would be bringing with Mr. Johnson in particular, an experienced utility systems manager, and I'm going to give you some information for you to read and, and take home with you and think about, and in this are his credentials, as well as the credentials of the other management staff and management staff. There, there are the possibility of volume discounts and purchasing power for chemicals because we provide services to multiple municipalities and watering sewer districts throughout the state of Missouri. And we also have professional registered engineers on our staff and experienced utility managers who can help you with an evaluation of your capital project needs. So, when you're hiring engineering services, we don't provide design engineering services, but we have engineers on our staff who can sit on your side of the table and help you evaluate what's being presented to you by engineering firms. We have a very good relationship with the regulatory agencies, with the Department of Natural Resources, and in fact, we, we frequently have a very positive inspection record, and in fact, not too long ago had, what we were told was the only inspection record by the Department of Natural Resources at our City of St. Genevieve Water Treatment Plant, where there were no significant, I'm losing the word, no significant issues. Basically, thumbs up, and they didn't know they'd ever, no one could ever remember that happening anywhere, so we're pretty proud of that, even though I can't even remember what it was called. We have about 250, I think 254 employees on our last payroll. The majority of those employees are located within the communities that we serve. There's about 15 people who actually work out of the Columbia office, and that's the President, and Accounting, and Computing, and Human Resources, and Regulatory Compliance and Safety Support for all of those locations. The other thing we're pretty proud of is we have an employee training program we call Alliance Academy. And if we were to come to work for the City of Boonville, not only would the individuals who work for us here with the city have access to that training as an employee benefit, but we would extend that training to the other city employees. And while many of the courses are in water and wastewater, many of those courses are also in electrical, and safety, and PLCs, and computer basics, and the kinds of things that anybody in public works might need, might need those skills. I, Earl told me I had about five minutes, so I always have a tendency to go over my time. I want to give you, again, some information that highlights our qualifications.
Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy. Can I have more? Thank you.
You'll see, when you thumb through the tabs, you'll see some information in Section 1 that just sort of gives you some background about our company. Section 2 talks about how we would approach operations here for the city. Section 3 talks about the corporate support that's available. If you were to go out and hire an individual to be, simply be your manager, simply be your operator, you'd limit it to the resources of that one individual. But when you hire a professional firm like Alliance Water Resources, you have the, you have access to all the resources through the company that can help with things like compliance review and safety programs and training. Section 4 gives some of our references. We've provided Earl and ML with, with our complete list of references, but this will give you just a snapshot of what some of the cities that we serve and some of the services that we've provided them. Section 5 has resumes of some of the key management personnel, including Mr. Johnson's resume. And then Section 6 has, has a few sections in it that just talk about some of our promises and our guarantees. The appendices, again, an overview. Appendix B lists all of the communities that we serve, and Appendix C gives you a copy of our employee training brochure. So, with that, again, I just want to thank you again for giving us this opportunity, and if you'd like to ask us questions, we'll do our best we can to answer them.
Anyone have any questions? Well, of course, at the next, at the second reading, we'll have in-depth questions also. So, you want to take this home with you and have your questions ready at the next meeting? Well, someone has a question right now.
I have a question, but it's probably better for Earl than...
Okay.
Okay, just a question, Earl, too. We aren't required to do non-competitive, so we can do sole source on this?
Yeah, this is a service, it's not a commodity that we bid.
Service level agreement. Okay, and then on your term and termination for next reading, will we have those filled in? I mean, there's blank right here on the term?
Yeah, if, we discussed that, if, if the council moves forward with it, it would be July 1, if the council, for whatever reason, doesn't get it.
Of, of when, though?
13.
Oh, okay. But I thought that there was something in this term specified, it's three years after a certain period, it goes on to a three-year renewal phase. Is it three years right from the start? Okay. So, the first phase is, is three years long?
Right.
And then it's renewable for three years more. If the city so decides that we want to try a different route, we can notify them before the third, 90 days prior to three years, and that would be our time to do that. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we'll see you in the next meeting. Thank you, Sandy.
I, I went through the references that I knew that Alliance had worked for. I chose three systems that were similar in size to us, Nevada, Missouri, St. Genevieve, and Henry County Public Water Supply District. I spoke to the city manager in Nevada, Missouri, and I spoke to the city administrator in St. Genevieve, and I spoke to the board president in Henry County. I didn't have any specific questions. I asked them what their experiences were, what their motivations were for entering into an agreement with Alliance Water Resources. Some of the folks had been with Alliance for decades, some had been with just a few years, so I believe I got a, a good range. I specifically didn't talk to the larger systems like St. Charles and Cape Girardeau. They're much larger systems, they're much larger populations, they're much larger concerns. On the back, I put bullets, if you will. I didn't do, or I attempted to not do, direct quotes. I don't think that was fair, it would be fair to the individuals I had spoken to. You can see in St. Genevieve, St. Genevieve is a little smaller system than ours. They serve a population of 4,500, and they have a 1.4 MGD plant, so they're a little smaller than us. You noticed in the comments from Mr. Toma in St. Genevieve that two specific employees were noted, Terry Merritt, who we've seen and has worked with us, and then Mr. Johnson. Terry Merritt used to work in the St. Genevieve plant and was promoted in the Alliance system to a manager position. He noted they hired many of the employees. All the employees had an opportunity to transition or made offers by Alliance. A couple of the employees declined for personal reasons, for whatever reason that was. In Mr. Toma's opinion, the employees had a brighter future with... In Mr. Toma's opinion, the employees had a brighter future with Alliance primarily because of access to training resources. You can imagine in a town the size of 4,500, it might be difficult for them to afford all the training opportunities in excess of the very minimum. You heard Sandy mention the Alliance Academy. That was a big plus for the St. Genevieve folks. Upper mobility with Alliance, we mentioned Terry Merritt. I mean, Boonville is a limited size, number of employees, we have limited places to go, so an employee doesn't really have, just by our nature of our organization, much chance for promotion. With Alliance and 200-plus employees, there's much more opportunities, as Mr. Toma felt. The quotes I did use were exclamations, great organization, a good organization and great. He noted that besides running the plant, he used the term contiguous liability. He was impressed with Alliance's standing before the green table, is a term that we used to use, I guess, in the Navy, there, Mr. Kelly. They stood up for the responsibility for operating the plant. He noticed that peace of mind is something you need to apply value to. He had much the same concerns, much the same negotiations as we've been having with Alliance on contracts, but he said, "At the bottom, the bottom line is you apply a value to a peace of mind to hire an organization that has all the capabilities that you can bring, they can bring to it." He also made note of provided efficiencies, and because of Alliance's improved record-keeping, data-keeping, they gave much more confidence in rate increases. Nevada, Missouri, I visited with the city administrator down there, Mr. Kerman. He had some of the same exclamations, very positive, nothing but a success story. He had a little bit different technical reasons for going with Alliance. They are a population of 8,300, and they are a 1.4 MGD a day plant. So they're a little closer in size to us. They had specific issues with water quality. They also had specific issues with a new plant treatment process that was bedeviling, if you will, the city employees. And Alliance brought some of their technical resources in to help them manage that. Nevada, Missouri had a classical political conundrum. They hadn't had a rate increase in water in 20 years. Part of the reason is they, as an organization, didn't do very well at justifying the rates. Again, with Alliance's improved efficiencies, data, record-keeping, they were able to justify and comfortably justify a 25% rate increase, the first one in 20 years. Now, that's separate, those problems are separate than what Alliance, but Alliance contributed, made a positive contribution to them solving that problem. Again, all city employees assumed by Alliance, except one, actually received more money. Henry County, Henry County is a water district. They serve a population of 9,800, and they've got a 2.4 MGD water treatment plant that are a little larger than us. The board president there made mention that Dick Tuttle, the number two man, attends board meetings. And we don't have Dick Tuttle here tonight, so the number one man attends Boonville meetings, I guess. The local manager, Mr. Weber, Sandy mentioned the backup A operator. The A operator for Henry County has traditionally been the backup A operator for Boonville. So Mr. Weber was noted by their board president as being very good. Any questions?
Thank you, ML, for that summary. Anything else? We will move along then to Item C, Encyciform Proposal Approval. You had a memorandum from ML to Earl in your packet regarding the encyciform bid and the plans for that. And we are looking for approval for the original 109,000, is that correct, ML? Do you want to talk about this, too?
That's right. Remember, the point of our, and it's called sewer rehab in the budget book, the point of our encyciform or cured-in-place pipe project is to make, cover as much ground as we have, as we can. So unlike a normal bid process, I want to come in as cheaply and use as little of the money I have assigned, I want to cover as much ground and use as much money as I have budgeted. We had put together a list based on last year's figures, and when the proposal actually came back, we were high and the figures were low. So I think we're going to put together a supplemental list of manholes to coat. And we'll go with this, this proposal to cover the pipe and our first list of manholes. And then as we get into the project, get further down, we will go to encyciform with this secondary list of manholes to use a little bit more of our money. My target is to use about 115,000 to 120,000. I've got to keep a little money back in case we have to do what's called point repairs. There may, as we do more in-depth inspection, there may be pieces of pipe that can't get the cured-in-place pipeline or through, and we'll have to dig up and repair that. So I need to keep a little money for those sort of containers.
Any questions for ML?
How do we, excuse me, how do we choose which pipes we're going to do?
Well, we're better at it now. Initially, and you've heard Earl use this term, low-hanging fruit, we had sections of our sewer system that were so obviously poor, and then we had some cross connections that we were aware of, and we did those first. In the last two years, since we have brought on a part-time employee who's dedicated to sewer inspections, we are inspecting more thoroughly the three watersheds, and primarily we're concentrating the roofs, branch watershed, that would be the watershed that goes up the western edge of town, out as far away as Interstate 70 by Caterpillar. And once we had picked off a low-hanging fruit in that watershed and other watersheds, now that we've got Kerry Thompson on board doing a more systematic search, he is searching that watershed and coming up with our list. Our manholes are done the same way. We inspect the pipes from and to a manhole, so we do the inspection at the manhole. And then whenever we're in a manhole, for whatever reason, we'll then add an inspection to that manhole. And that's where we come up with our manhole list. Generally speaking, and not always, but generally speaking, we are still concentrating on lining tile pipe, clay tile pipe. There has been some metal, ductile iron, cast iron pipe that we have lined. And the manholes are generally brick manholes, though we have lined some concrete manholes.
Very briefly, in like two minutes, could you explain to Steve and Becky exactly what encyciform is?
Encyciform, it's a relatively new process, probably going on 40 years or so now, but I think it was invented in Europe. And it used to be sort of proprietary technology, called encyciform, en-cit, you know, it sets up in a form. So it's a, it's a unique thing where they have a resin in some other materials that go in, in a soft thing, kind of like a sock, I think a heavy sock, it goes in, they push that into the domain they're going to line, kind of inside-out, straighten itself going in, and then they apply hot wire and steam to it, and it sets up hard as you can believe, just like a regular pipe. So it forms a pipe on the inside of the old pipe, and any joints, cracks, breaks you had in the old pipe are suddenly irrelevant. Of course, then they have a cutter that goes in and opens up each person's service line along the way so that they, they can go in, because those got closed up. It's a, the advantage of it in urban areas is you don't have to dig up. You go from one manhole to the next, they just set up there and push it through there. You don't have to dig up and disrupt everything. And that's an advantage here, here also. And it's conveniently priced just slightly below the dig-up price. But they, encyciform, used to be, as I said, it was proprietary, there are some other companies that do, send you something in generic called cured-in-place, but encyciform, I've used them for 20 years and don't have any desire to deviate from their, their level of service. So it's, I've got some samples in my office that I should have brought with me, not if I thought of it, but it's, it's quite an impressive product, frankly.
Thank you, Earl. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept this proposal. Morris?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal.
Noah?
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? Comments? Roll call.
Beach?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Ayler?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hurt?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Reports of standing committees, Boonville Housing Authority, Morris?
The housing authority met, basically you've got the minutes in your pocket, and all I can say is the housing authority is in very good hands.
Okay. Item B, Tourism Commission, Becky?
Attended by for my first meeting, it was very interesting, good turnout. They've got a couple of things coming up, the Peddler's Jamboree is the next big event coming up here. One of the things that was announced on that, the state is going to start charging a service charge for the use of the Katy Trail in large events like that. They did waive the fee for this year, but starting next year, these events, the state's going to charge them, I think, $5 a rider for the wear and the tear and the upkeep on the trail, and the state an opportunity to make a little bit of money. So the minutes are there. That's the next big thing coming up.
Okay. Well, you got any questions, Becky? They also had an awards.
Oh, yes, the awards banquet on Thursday night, I attended that, they did the historical preservation awards and the tourism awards. It was very well-attended and very well-received, and I think it's going to be an annual event, and I recommend you attend next year.
That's very nice. Any other questions for Becky? Rental Housing Ad-Hoc Committee, Mike?
Yes, this is the minutes from the 28th of March, we since had a meeting this last week, but discussed these minutes. We reviewed 18 different cities, the programs in 18 different cities, including Columbia, Mobily, and a few others, around, on their rental housing ordinances and programs that they have in place. And then we discussed options in general categories for Boonville. Option one being what we have today, that is status quo, we have ordinances and codes in place, and a question of how we enforce those, or whether we would have to improve on those, and what our recommendations would be on how to do that. And then option two would be a licensing only, where basically the owners of the rental property would self-verify that they meet those codes and ordinances and to get a, get a certificate or license to operate or run a rental property. Option three would be licensing much like that, but included required inspections from a certified inspector, be it public or private. City-provided inspector, like the way Mobily does it, and Columbia does it, or private, like many cities throughout the nation have considered doing. Anyway, we discussed those options, and the discussion has been ongoing. We had a meeting this last week, and I'll tell you more about that another time.
Any questions for Mike? Reports of city officials, city administrator, Morris?
We had, it's a work session on the Kemper Science Hall Potential Project. There were, I wrote you a memo on, on what, I guess my perceptions of the meeting was, were. There's the role of FFCC, and then I guess, I call it supply-demand issues with, with the students on the receiving end and on the resulting job end, I guess, so. And then the other one was local funding. I addressed local funding in detail there, where I stand on it now, and I'd be prepared to answer any questions on that. The other two issues, we passed on to Jim, primarily, and Marcia, these are the FFCC, and I think we'll have some response coming from them in the, in the near future that we'll provide to you prior to you having to vote on it soon. So if anybody had any questions or anything on, on the finance, as I said, that's where I stand now, basically, consistent with what I think I represent as a Becky.
Did you also have in here something about June, another special meeting you need to have?
Yeah, if you, if you want to hear a bit of a formal feedback, we threw up some dates to Jim particularly, he's been kind of busy with some, some personal issues of late, some graduations and so forth, I think. But I think they, they indicated that we could maybe have a, like a work session before, at least not later than the next council meeting, you know, prior, prior to that, which is, I don't know, given the holiday coming up, whether it's realistic to think anything else could be scheduled prior to that, but, but I think that's, that's something we certainly shoot for.
Next council meeting is June 3, Monday, June 3.
I'm available, but I don't have any plans for the holidays, so.
Anyone else have any problems with the work session prior to the next regular council meeting at June 3? Nobody be here, 6 o'clock?
I can't.
You can't, so.
Yeah, my day's off for Thursdays and Fridays.
Okay. Henry, anyone else?
I'll be out of town.
No. Okay. So that would give us six of the eight.
And we're talking the 27th?
I mean, June 3.
June 3.
Prior to the.
Oh, prior to the meeting.
Mm-hmm. You can be here.
I'll be coming in from Ohio, but I'll be here.
Okay, you're a good person.
I'll be here.
Okay. Six of the eight, so that would be a quorum.
It's just a work session.
Yeah, just be a work session. Okay. Okay. Is that all right with everybody? What time? 6 o'clock. Okay.
Is that going to, my understanding was the other deadline was June 7?
Oh, yes.
So if we have a work session on the 3rd before the meeting, or we then vote in on something after the meeting?
Probably so. I, I think actually it's, the date was really June 13th, which is much different, but it's a little bit different, but, but I would.
But that's what we're thinking.
I would think, probably so.
Question?
Yes, Mike?
How does that affect what Steve Hague has to do with the hearing we just approved?
That was for the 17th.
17th, okay.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Okay. Mayor, just one thing I would like to point out to you, sometimes these things happen and it doesn't get passed along, but this is a nice thing that happened the other day. Ben Jones from Union Pacific came to visit us at City Hall, and while I was gone, Mark Livingston, mayor pro tem, must have whipped this up because it happened the day I got back, Ben Jones was there with a $10,000 check from Union Pacific for, to be applied for the Gingrich warehouse, some repairs down there, and they're called light monitors, that's that lighted glass area that's a square up in the roof. And they specifically asked if that money be used to repair that. So that's a nice little gift that just kind of came to us from Union Pacific, so we were very appreciative of that. City councillor?
I have nothing to say to you.
Okay. City clerk?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, miscellaneous?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Henry.
I've got a couple of things.
Okay.
One is these, and I've brought this up before, these folks that don't cut their grass habitually. Every year, it's the same people. I got a neighbor on the east side of my house, I cut the front, they never cut the back. And the reason I'm bringing this up tonight is because last year, my son
There were, I wrote you a memo on what, I guess my perceptions of the meeting was, work. There's the role of FFCC, and then, I guess, I call that supply-demand issues with the students on the receiving end and on the resulting job end, I guess, so. And then the other one was local funding. I addressed local funding in detail there, where I stand on it now, and I'd be prepared to answer any questions on that. The other two issues, we passed on to Jim, primarily, and Marcia, these are the FFCC, and I think we'll have some response coming from them in the near future that will provide to you prior to you having to vote on it soon, so. If anybody had any questions or anything on the finance, as I said, that's where I stand now, basically, consistent with what I think I represent, but Becky.
Did you also have in here something about a June, another special meeting you need to have?
Yeah, if you want to hear a bit of a formal feedback, we threw out some dates to Jim particularly. He's been kind of busy with some personal issues of late, and graduations and so forth, I think, but I think they indicated that we could maybe have like a work session before, at least not later than the next council meeting, prior to that. I don't know, given the holiday coming up, whether it's realistic to think anything else could be scheduled prior to that, but I think that's something we certainly shoot for.
Next council meeting is June 3rd, Monday, June 3rd.
I'm available, but I don't have any plans for the holidays, so.
Anyone else have any problems with the work session prior to the next regular council meeting at June 3rd? Nobody be here at 6 o'clock?
I can't.
You can't score.
Yeah, my day's off for Thursdays and Fridays now.
Okay. Henry, anyone else?
I'll be out of town.
Yeah, okay. So that would give us six of the eight.
When we're talking the 27th? I'm on June 3rd. June 3rd.
Prior to the meeting.
Oh, prior to the meeting.
Mm-hmm. Can be here?
I'll be coming in from Ohio, but I'll be.
Okay, you're a good person.
I'll be here.
Okay. Six of the eight, so that would be a quorum.
It's just a work session.
Yeah. Just be a work session. Okay. Okay. Is that all right with everybody? What time? 6 o'clock.
Is that going to, am I understanding what the other deadline was, June 7?
Oh, yes.
So if we have a work session on the 3rd before the meeting, or are we then voting on something at the meeting?
Probably so. I think actually it's, the date was really June 13th, which is much different, but it's a little bit different, but I would.
But that's what we're thinking.
I would think probably so.
Question.
Yes, Mike?
How does that affect what Steve Hague has to do with the hearing we just approved?
That was for the 17th.
17th, okay.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything else? Mayor, just one thing I would like to point out to you. Sometimes these things happen, and it doesn't get passed along, but this is a nice thing that happened the other day. Ben Jones from Union Pacific came to visit us at City Hall, and while I was gone, Mark Livingston, mayor pro temp, must have whipped this up because it happened the day I got back. Ben Jones was there with a $10,000 check from Union Pacific for, to be applied for the Gingrich Warehouse, some repairs down there in the, they're called light monitors, that's that lighted glass area that's a square up in the roof. They specifically asked if that money be used to repair that. So that's a nice little gift that just kind of came to us from Union Pacific, so we were very appreciative of that. City Councilor?
I have nothing to say to you.
Okay. City Clerk?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Miscellaneous?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Henry.
I've got a couple of things.
Okay.
One is these, and I've brought this up before, these folks that don't cut their grass habitually. Every year, it's the same people. I've got a neighbor on the east side of my house. I cut the front, they never cut the back, and the reason I'm bringing this up tonight is because last year, my son was in the shower, and he heard something hit the shed behind the shower, big snake. Yesterday, I was sitting in my living room before work, and I see something go across the ledge in front of the picture window, and I'm thinking it's a squirrel, five-and-a-half-foot-long black snake.
Oh, man.
Now, I'm, you know, and I called the city this morning, but I called last week, but, you know, these folks that don't keep their properties up, we need, especially the habitual ones, so we got to send them, they probably cut the grass over there one time a year. I cut the front. I've been cutting it for 15, 20 years, but I'm not going to cut the back, but we need to get something done, you know, we need to, these folks, we shouldn't have, I shouldn't have to go to the city and say their grass needs cutting. It should be something that we can just do, you know, we need to. And the second thing I have is something that's, last week just, just got to me, and I said, "I'm going to say something at City Hall, probably won't do, won't be worth a damn to say it, but I'm going to say it." This little city of Boonville, I want to put them on the map, it's saying, "I'm tired of these damn gas prices. There's no reason for it, and I'm tired of it." I was in Casey's last year, and there was a district manager in there, and the manager told her, "I'll go around and check gas prices in a few minutes to see where we need to go." That's ridiculous. That's a price gouge, and I don't care what she says, there's no reason for these gas prices to be going up like, every year, when people are ready to go on vacation, these prices go up. There's no reason for it, and I know that, and everybody else in here knows that, but we're all getting screwed at the same time, and it's time for it to stop. It's ridiculous, you know, and I'd like for the Daily News or somebody to put it on the record that, you know, we're tired of it, there's no reason for it.
Well said.
That might be a unanimous vote, Henry. Real quickly, to speak to your nuisance, the grass and the cars and all that kind of stuff, do you, you know, if you remember, one of the things in one of the memorandums that Earl sent out was that we were going to kind of start cracking down on that, and I believe that has started. I don't know that there are enough that you've seen any effect yet, and it's one of those things that does take a little while to get started, but do you want to speak about that briefly?
Well, your comments are well-taken, and we hope we can get some, but I'd have to frankly say, I'm not sure the focus is on grass. It's more on the other nuisance junk stuff, was what we're trying to hit there, so. So, guy named Glenn is still over what piece you're talking about, so I'll visit with him.
Which, in Glenn's defense, we bought up two properties here in town up at Taxcel. We don't officially own them, but the grass needs mowed, and we got two letters, even though we don't even own it. He's sent it to the owners, too, but I think Glenn thought, "I'll send it to everybody whose name's on there, and hopefully one of them will mow it." But, so in Glenn's defense, he's.
A lot of letters, but there's a lot of problems.
Yeah. And we're going to go mow it, because we know the order.
Okay. Any other comments? I think ML must have something to say.
I think in the packet, I have a memo to you announcing a household hazardous waste, tire, and e-waste collection on June 29th, it's a Saturday. That'll be at the City Services Building. This is the first time we've done, and I call this a mega-collection. We have done household hazardous waste, and we have done tire and e-waste collections together and then separately, but this is the first time we've done all three. So this is quite an undertaking. It's going to be a joint effort between us, Cooper County Commission, and the Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Management District. The Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Management District is paying for all this. On the back, you'll see the touch sheets or the drafts of the ads. Again, the Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Management District will run those ads. There will be charges for car tires, but there won't be any charge for household hazardous waste or e-waste. E-waste is going to be your televisions, computers, printers, those sort of things. Household hazardous waste are going to be everything you use in your household, herbicides, pesticides, petroleum products, batteries, anything that is a household item. In other words, we won't take commercials, so farmers with the large barrels of roundup don't qualify, for example, but the stuff that you've got in your grandmother's shed, that all qualifies, those brown glass jars, that all qualifies, and we encourage you, both us and, I can tell you, speaking for you, and the fire chief encourages you to get rid of that stuff.
Mike?
Yeah, ML, I don't, I don't know that I've ever been to the one that they, the ones they've had in Boonville that were independent collections, but in Columbia, as you may have participated in theirs in the past, you know how they have such participation, they line up vehicles, you have this, you go to this area, you have this. Are you going to drive-through so there's not congestion, or, I know you have a back way around the back, are you going to try to do that kind of?
Well, you're asking too many questions. Yes, you're going to drive-through, yes, there will be congestion, and we have mapped it out. What generally happens is we line up to the stop sign there by the Catholic Cemetery, and you come down by City Services to that west entrance. You turn in that west entrance, and then you go actually through the door into our parking garage for the household hazardous waste, and then we'll have a truck for the household hazardous waste set up outside, on the south side of the garage. Cars will come through the building, in one door, we'll unload you there, and out the other door.
Great.
The, in the past, we have been able to do the e-waste right in that same line. The wringer on this is the tires. The tires, I anticipate, being set up over in the corner by the parking garage, the salt storage shed, someplace out there, and we're going to do the household hazardous waste, the e-waste folks does their own, and then the county road and bridge crew will do the tires. That's our plan. Where all that goes, haywire, is when people leave our building, they're supposed to drive to the east, to take a right turn, go down Albursted, and disappear, they double back into the, so, yes, there'll be congestion, but we're going to try to have order to it.
Thanks.
I just want to say, this is a really good project. It's not particularly glamorous, or something everybody gets real excited about, but I know my family took part in it last year. We have a farm with a lot of outbuildings with, like you say, the brown glass jugs that you don't have any idea what it is, and you don't know what to do with it, and we were able to bring a lot of things in, and it was just a wonderful thing for us to freely utilize that.
Roughly, the household hazardous waste collection costs $15,000 an event. The tires are $45,000 to $5,000 an event, and then the e-waste are self-sustaining.
Okay. But it's a good thing. Thank you, ML. Any other miscellaneous? Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second it? We will adjourn.